Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Vice President, Jolly will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Vice President Jolly. We'd like to welcome you to the November 6th study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,885th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting. That will take place on Monday, November 18th of this year. Our council absences tonight are Scott Barr and Kathy White. And we have any special guests? And we want to announce that, Dave, did you want to give a report on the Mayor, Mayor Wright? Thank you, Dave.
No problem. Just wanted to update the council and anybody who's, might be watching, that Mayor Wright had surgery about a week ago on his back. He's recuperating. It was a little slow at first, but he's doing, he's in fine spirits right now. He's doing well. He's moving into a little bit of a rehab phase next and really appreciates all the good thoughts and wishes and cards. So, he's doing well now.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any others before we leave this? It's my sister's birthday tomorrow and she is registered. No, it is her birthday though.
Cardwell Forrest.
Cardwell Forrest, yes. Yes, 21 again, yes. Is there any other announcements from the council? If not, I'll go to the audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council in any manner that's not on the yellow sheets, if you'd approach, point to my left or right, will be happy to take your comments. Hearing and seeing none, then we will move on. This is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken this evening. The council members will, however, offer either a resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may be and may include approving, denying, and referring resolution to a committee or a city department for the report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action could also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting, which will be on Monday, November 18th, where they will be officially voted on. Council, if anyone would like to speak to the council this evening in any manner that is on the agenda, please approach, point to my left or right. And please, if you would, please give us your name and address for the record. Okay? All righty. And we're going to go into, under new business, or excuse me, any audience communication? Anyone wishing to speak to council in any manner before us, other than on the yellow sheet? Nope? Okay. We'll go under new business. Item one, a request to dedicated park in Washington Park Site condominiums, Rico Suave, for a dedication of public park within Washington Park Site condominiums as required in the warrantee D. Mr. Toramina, are you going to give this, or should I go to Mr. Sullivan?
I can speak briefly to this item.
Okay.
This project dates back to April of 2016, at which time council approved the cluster site condominium for Washington Park. Included in that design was an approximate three-quarter acre park located at the southwest corner of Hickson and Arbor Trail. That land was excluded from the condominium master deed with an expectation that it would eventually be dedicated over to the city for use as a public park. We are at that point now of such dedication. Mr. Suave has been working closely with both the planning department, as well as the Parks and Recreation Department and DPW, moving towards that dedication with improvements to that park. Mr. Davis can speak to any specific issues relative to the use of that land, but this evening's request is for council to accept the dedication of that land as a public park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. As our, you know, procedures planning director said, we are pleased with the site and the progress that's been made. Playground has been inspected and we are satisfied with the condition of the site and ready to take possession of it if council approves. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Thank you. Councilman Meakin.
This is pretty much no brainer for us. I'll be happy to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have an approving on consent. Any others? Thank you very much. Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, then we'll move on to item two, the appointment of a substitute magistrate for the 16th District Court. 16th District Court Administrative Order 2460, appointing Kathleen L. Cole as magistrate pursuant to Public Act 16 of the Public Acts of 1976, MCLA Section 600.85012. Judge Kavanaugh, good evening.
Good evening. Welcoming Kathleen Cole. I'll tell you a little bit more about her. I'm Judge Sean Kavanaugh at the 16th District Court and along with Judge McCann, who's not here tonight. We gave her the night off. I'm here to introduce Kathleen Cole as our next substitute backup magistrate with your permission and consent as required by state statute. Our current backup magistrate is Dennis Epler. He is early next year, I think, maybe a little later, going to move up north permanently to a home somewhere that's about four hours away from here. So, we won't be able to run in at the last minute and help us out if our current magistrate, Barbara Shear, is ill or for some reason can't make it. So, we're just looking ahead and Kathleen Cole is a local attorney. She's been practicing for how many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, so she has a little bit of experience. And she was also worked for a law firm. You might know, it was a Bocas and Placas?
Placasin Associates.
Placasin Associates. It was Bocas before that. In Westland, as part of her duties, she did some prosecution work over at the Westland District Court. Any other courts over there?
No.
So, she has some experience on that side of the law and she does some family law for the most part now. So, I present her to you if you have any questions and ask for your approval that we need to get her on board. Thank you very much.
Certainly. Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman, Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I've known Kathleen for at least 11, 12 years. I've served with her on the Livonia Bar Association. When I was the president, she was the vice president and then she took over and did a better job as president than I did.
I don't know about that.
And I recently had the opportunity to meet with her to discuss her impending taking this position as magistrate at the district court and shared with her my perspective, for whatever it's worth, and told her things that I should or should not have done, I don't know. But I think Kathleen's a great addition and will fit very well in the courthouse, as she has in the past, practicing as an attorney. So, I'm happy to offer an approving resolution for consent if nobody else has questions or comments.
Certainly. Anyone? No?
Thank you.
You'd like to say, Ms. Cole?
No, I'm looking forward to helping to serve the court.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Thank you, Judge.
Good evening.
All right. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Hearing and seeing no one, then we will move on to item three, which is a request to approve of a budget adjustment for fiscal year ending November 30th. This is brought to us from the Department of Finance. Mr. Slater.
Good evening, council. We've reviewed the 2019 budget and identified areas where results have been favorable and our funds are available for reallocation. Those areas include the LCA SA revenue, state shed revenue, interest income, taxes, telephone, electric, and planning. The total available for reallocation is $1,658,000. What we're recommending is to move that to two different places, like we did previously in the last year, splitting it half to an additional contribution to our VIBA fund to shore up the unfunded OPEB liability and the other half to the Building Improvement Capital Projects Fund for future building improvement projects. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Questions, council, or direction?
Madam President?
Certainly, go right ahead.
I think Mr. Slater has done a great job, as always. I'll offer an approving for consent.
Thank you. We have an approving on consent. Any others? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing none? You have approving on consent, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Number four is a request to approve a proposed design concept for gymnastics space and renovation at the Jackie Curtsey Recreation Center. Pardon me, this is brought to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thanks, Council President. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. This past January, council approved Decalini Segal Design to perform, design services, prepare bid documents, and construction administration, the former gymnastics space renovation. Parks and Recreation staff and a committee comprised of Councilman Jolly, Councilman Meakin, two representatives from the Parks and Recreation Commission, along with a representative from city administration, have been working with Decalini Segal Design on renovation plans. We are now to a point that we feel we have a good concept in place and a tentative budget, and we are asking council to approve in concept the plans and a projected budget for this project.
Councilman Meakin.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, as Superintendent has mentioned, this has been a long process and there's, I believe, still quite a bit of study that needs to be accomplished with this plan. I'm going to offer to send this to the committee of the whole so we can dive into it a little further and make the right decisions for the change in the gymnastics area for the Rec Center.
Thank you. We have committed the whole offered by Councilman Meakin. Were there others? Hearing and seeing no one? Anyone from the audience on this? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience?
Nick goes on a consent.
Consent agenda is what he prefers. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Davis. Item five is a request to approve City of Livonia ASME Union Local 192 Contract Agreement for a period of December 1st of this year through November 30th of '22. This is brought to us by the Civil Service Department. Ms. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, council members. I'm very happy to be here, seeking your approval for the local 192 contract that will, as President mentioned, will run through, from December 1st, 2019, through November 30th, 2022. This was absolutely one of the best negotiations I've ever participated in. It was friendly. At times, it was fun. It was just a really great union board and representative from ASME, and it was just probably the best negotiation I've ever been in. Everybody walked away feeling like it was a win-win. And some of the highlights are, we modified the promotional, the current promotional process for employees, and what it does is it gives the city more flexibility in filling permanent vacancies and it gives the employees more opportunities for those vacancies. So, that was one of the highlights for us. It set the salaries, salary rates for the next three years and there are various other improvements and benefits and processes and language, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Good job. Yes?
Madam President?
Yes.
Well, I'm glad to hear that this was a good experience and that we have this taken care of with a positive result for all sides. I think this is an important time to probably note. One of our most important jobs as a council is to approve of negotiated contracts, but not to negotiate the contracts ourselves. That's something that comes up quite a bit when we are having issues in different areas and different collective bargaining units want different things. But it is the administration's responsibility to negotiate the contracts and come to an agreement before the matter comes to us as a council. And I'm saying that mostly, obviously, we know that up here, but I don't know that residents know that at large. So, if there are no questions, I'll offer this for consent, but I'm happy that it's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Thank you very much. Great job. Yes. Okay. Item six, council, is a request to authorize an additional appropriation expenditure. Brought to us from the Public Service Division. I'm going to let you explain it, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, council. Doug Moore with the Public Service Division. On April 8th, 2019, council approved the department's request to replace the City Hall fire alarm panel in the alarm system. After the project was complete but before it was approved, the fire marshal required several items be installed or replaced that were not in the original project. Those items were three additional horn or strobe alarms, two additional notification appliances in the annex hallway, and a needed power supply for window sash mag locks. The total amount needed to complete the funding request is $4,793.24, and the funding is available in the 2019 unexpended fund balance in the capital project budget.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman McIntyre.
Thank you for being here, as always, Mr. Moore. And I'd like to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda. It's clear that there were some additional items that could not have been anticipated until we had the review by the fire marshal. So, we have the funds and like to go ahead and offer that. There are no objections for consent.
Thank you very much. You have a consent. Councilman Meakin.
Actually, Mr. Moore, I do have a question on this. Since the fire marshal works for the city, how are we not aware that this was required before the project was designed and built?
Part of it was the additional horns were in the original bid, but at the time, they were not needed. And then, as he went through the system and found that a couple of the horns weren't working as loudly as they should, he felt they needed to be replaced.
You know, because this is what some businesses get rather upset about, when you go to them to give you the, what you need, you put it in, and then they don't, then they come back to you after it's installed and say, "Oh, by the way, we need this, this, and this." So, it's kind of a process that needs to be, you know, you give them the whole story upfront, and if we can't do it for ourselves, how do we expect the business community to do it? So, just a concern about that, and I don't have any objections to the additional, because obviously, it's needed.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Have an approving on consent, Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Item seven is also from our Public Service Division, and it is proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended. Go right ahead, Mr. Moore.
As you know, the city's part of the Alliance Rouge Communities, the ARC. In 2016, the ARC began working on the MS4 permit, the stormwater permit with the state of Michigan. We still do not have an accepted permit because of the alliance's unique collaborative requirements they're going through with the state and how things are being written. One of the last things that needs to be done for all of the communities is the writing and the acceptance of this IDEP ordinance, the illicit discharge elimination plan. The alliance's executive director, ECT, wrote a, the language, sent it to the state. The state accepted. The language, sent it back to the communities, and the communities have dispersed it to their law departments. Our law department reviewed it, got it into the proper form. We submitted to the state to make sure it was okay, and they have accepted it. So, now we're asking council to approve it.
Council, your direction or pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, Councilman Crispin.
I will offer a first reading on this item.
Thank you. You've heard first reading? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Number eight is a request to approve 2020 road repair program from our Engineering Division as reviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee on Roads for the eighth year of 10-year road paving village approved by Livonia residents. Mr. Zillinski.
Good evening, Madam President, city council members. As you know, it's November. It's that time of year to start planning for next year's road repairs as we get ready for winter maintenance. But we had Citizens Advisory met twice previously in September 25th, and again, on October 16th, in which we heard public comments. Everyone was invited. We had 14 residents show up, and then the committee was able to hear their concerns for the roads and answer any questions they may have and give an anticipated timetable for those repairs. As you know, the city staff will be performing the Pacer ratings in 2020 for 370 miles. We do it every two years. So, again, we'll have an updated information for all 36 sections in the city of Livonia to be posted on the website, probably late next fall of 2020. With that, we recommended approximately 63 segments to be repaired, and then that included a budget of 8.9 million, of which 4.4 is slated for concrete, 3.75 for asphalt, and $750,000 for concrete maintenance and selective slab repairs for the 2020, based on the 2020 budget approval. That equates to 54% of recons, 33% rehabs, and 13% maintenance. As you know, we can't fix the worst first, otherwise, we would go broke, and it would take forever to get caught up. So, we try to do a mix of fixes, obviously, for asset management purposes. With that, the Citizens Advisory had met on those segments that were slated for repair and are requesting your approval for those 63 segments. Again, it's going to be based on the funding available, the final design and bid prices when we bid the projects out for asphalt and concrete in February of 2020. The only segment I'd like to bring attention to for Wayne County next year that we have on board is going to be Merriman Road from Schoolcraft to Plymouth, and we recently received plans for the resurfacing at Seven Mile and Inkster today. So, we're looking forward to your assistance to approve the road repair program, which we had Scott Lockwood from AEW attend us that evening, along with Mark Locke from OHM Advisors. And Carl Kevro here shortly will present a resolution over and above the one that was approved that evening, in which the first one, again, the citizens advisory, you see attachment there, approve these segments, again, based on the available funding for those 63 segments to have completed. And we anticipate, again, approximately 14 miles, thereabouts, based on 370 miles of roadway to get replaced. So, with that, again, looking for your approval, based on $8.9 million worth of approved budget to do those repairs. And then, I'll let Carl present the resolution for the other ones that want to bring light to on Wayne County roadways, as you all are aware. We are very fortunate to have Wayne County come in this year before the Vietnam Memorial Wall to do Merriman at Five Mile, so we appreciate their efforts to get that area replaced so it's safe for our motorists, and applaud their efforts, again, Warren Evans and their staff, to get that completed. With that, I'll let Carl Kevro come to the podium, the chairman, the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, and briefly explain the resolution, again, to bring attention, to hopefully get some other repairs that people probably drive every day that we all want to get done. Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Todd. Good evening, city council. Appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. We thank you for last year, for whatever input you were able to, as Todd mentioned, help push along that repair down on Merriman near Five Mile, and we've got a few other resolutions that we'd like you to help us for this year. Number one, we'd like to bring to attention the reconstructing of Farmington Road from Plymouth Road to Orange Lawn, including widening the northbound lanes to allow for a dedicated right turn and a through lane. Number two, we'd like to bring to attention concrete patching or resurfacing on Seven Mile Road from Newburg Road to 275. Number three, the resurfacing of Farmington Road between Six Mile to Seven Mile Road. Number four, the resurfacing of the intersections at westbound Schoolcraft at Farmington, westbound Schoolcraft at Middle Belt Road. Number five, the resurfacing of the intersection of Middle Belt and Five Mile Road. I think we can all agree on that one. And the resurfacing of, number six, the resurfacing of the southeast corner at Farmington Road at Five Mile. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Madam President, again.
Questions? Yeah. Any questions? Can I ask you a quick question? This is not part of your proposal, but I'd love it to be. This street on Woodreen where the urologist put in this beautiful office, and I know that's a private road there, but is there anything we can do about that? I mean, you know, for such a beautiful building and the resurfacing, sir, you know, we've got this bumpy little stretch of road. I'd like to pay for it myself to have it done. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
That did come up in our, at our meetings. That did come up at our meetings. I think Todd can expound on it.
I'll pass it out to the city attorney.
I think our city attorney wants to go. Yeah.
This, this week, Monday, or either end of last week or beginning of this week, Jerome Han, the inspections department, and myself, we had a conversation with the folks from the urology.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the half of the street that's not paved isn't their property. It's across the street. We're going to have conversations with the person across the street about repairing that or fixing that.
Oh, great.
Because in our opinion, it's a safety hazard.
Yes.
And it also presents a problem for the urology because it's an access road.
Yes.
And we maybe, we made some promises by various people that weren't kept up.
Sure.
But we're involved in that. Unfortunately, nothing's going to happen until the spring because the, as I understand it, the asphalt factory shut down November 15th.
Sure.
But we are actively involved with that, and Jerome Han and I, we're trying to take care of that right now.
Thank you very much. That's very good. Thank you. Any other comments? If you have the pleasure, just drive right on. Anyhow, thank you, sir, for the indulgence from me. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Well, through chair, if we could take the resolution that they offered here and pass it along to our county commissioners, we can start the discussion of what our priorities are in the city to repair or replace county roads. These are all county roads that they suggested, you know, need, desperate need to repair, you know, because if they were our responsibilities, we'd take care of them. But we need to get this into their hands so it can get onto theirs, because sometimes it takes a two- to three-year process to get it onto their schedule. So, I think it's important that we pass this along to both our county commissioners.
Excellent point. Yes, go right ahead.
Madam President, I will just, is he still back there?
He's right up there.
You don't have to get up again. I was just going to say, no, you're okay. Looking at the names of all the people here at the bottom of this resolution, I think it's important to thank them all. And you see some names that care a whole lot about the city and put a whole lot of work and effort into this process, and a whole lot of people don't necessarily know that you're even doing the work. So, we do appreciate it, and I think as we all look at the names here, we can, we can tell that we know almost each and every one of these people really cares greatly about the city, and this is the way that they've chosen to serve, and they do it well. Thank you.
Great point. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Anyone else? No? Okay.
Madam President?
Mr. Burney, go right ahead.
We're off that one. If I could go back to item number seven.
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understood the motion by Mr. Meakin, because he said it was for a first reading. I took that to mean that it was... Crispin, I apologize. I took that to mean that it was a approving resolution to have a first reading at the next regular.
Oh, my apologies. I forgot. There was one more step left in there, but yes.
No, I knew that. I knew that you meant, I just wanted to clarify the record in case anybody ever questioned it.
Certainly. That's great. Okay. We're all good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Great. Mr. Zillinski, you're all set?
I'm waiting for a motion. We need a resolution.
That's what I thought, but that's why I wondered if you were all set. Okay. Yeah, we do. Don't we?
President, I'll for the approving resolution.
Okay, thank you.
For consent.
Would you like that on consent?
For consent, of course.
Consent, of course. It's a new category we have, consent, of course. Okay. Item nine, then, is a request to amend the engineering contract through the qualified based selection, QBS process with Anderson, Eckenstein, and Westrick Inc. for design and construction engineering services for 2020 concrete road program. Engineering.
And you're approving the previous item that allows us to continue on with these items that are critical, again, to get design ready for our bidding, to get the best prices for the city and the taxpayers for February of next year. With that, Scott Lockwood from AEW has been instrumental over the last 11 years for this program, getting our concrete work completed in timely fashion. We're looking for a budget of $4.4 million, under which they will help assist us in getting these roads reconstructed with their design, getting cores, asking for your approval, any and getting cores. Asking for your approval, any amount of $189,000, $200,000, based on the QBS, uh, contract for their services, professional services for design, uh, maintenance, and, uh, reconstruct for contract 20C.
Great. Okay. Any direction or comment, Council? Yes, Councilman Crispin.
Yes, sir. This has been a very successful program, and it's great to see us continuing to move forward with it. Uh, Anderson Eckstein and Westrick obviously has been very involved in it over the years, and they've, they've done a very good job assisting our engineering department. Uh, it's my pleasure to offer an approving resolution on this and ask that it be placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing none. Then we'll move on to item 10, which is also a request, uh, from the engineering contract through the qualified-based selection by the same bidder, um, Anderson Eckstein and Westrick Inc. for design engineering services for 2020 concrete ru, road maintenance selection slab program. Sounds kind of a tough one, Mr. Lockwood.
Madam President, this is.
Yes, go right ahead.
This involves approximately $750,000 worth of work in which we go out to areas where the streets have heaved up the roadway, causing, uh, issues with drainage along that corridor, or certain segments of streets, to remove those trees and, uh, and then try to avoid damage to our city plows, and getting positive drainage back to that street so people don't have pounding water in front of their driveways. Coupled with that, we have approximately 25 locations that, uh, are included that get called into DPW or engineering that are critical, again, to fix, that are heaved up, or something that's, uh, detrimental to that area of the neighborhoods, to get and make them safe for our motorists and for, um, obviously, uh, garbage trucks or police and fire. So, we're looking for your approval to have AEW go on, um, to complete the design as part of the QBS contract, based on, the contract amount is $750,000. The design amount is $39,750, and again, look forward to working with them. This will be the second year we've done this to increase the, uh, amount of repairs we can do, which, again, will make a big difference in the neighborhoods throughout the city of Livonia. Thank you.
Certainly. Excellent work. Yes, Council Vice President Jolly.
Madam President, uh, I'm happy to offer an approving in regards to this matter. I think, um, Mr. Lockwood does a great job for being a Brother Rice guy, despite, um, where he came from. Um, he really adds a lot of value to the city. Um, and I'll offer that for consent if there are no other objections.
Certainly. Anybody have any problem with Brother Rice? I mean, the, uh, the, okay, no. Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Did you want to say anything?
Um, yes, if I could, real quickly.
Certainly.
I will just disregard that last Brother Rice comment, or any U of D comments.
Just ask who made the playoffs this year and who didn't.
Exactly.
And I've, this is a reiteration of something I think I've said in the past, but we are very proud Anderson Eckstein and Westrick is to have been part of this program for the last 11 years, and certainly look forward to being part of it in 2020. Um, this is the showcase road millage program for the region. There is no question. I, you know, again, I've said it before, but we work in 32 other municipalities, and, you know, I, none of them have as great of a local road program as the city of Livonia does and has for the last, I can't remember how long the millage has been.
2002.
2000, since 2002, so we are very proud to be part of it and work with Todd and his great engineering team as well.
Excellent. Excellent. Great. Thank you. Uh, Councilman.
And I'll just say it again. I've made this comment before about a number of, um, our, our major partners, vendor partners in a lot of our engineering projects. Uh, one of the reasons, uh, one of the ways they show their respect is they send their most senior people here, even for things that are fairly routine. I mean, they're, they're big contracts, but they're routine. We know each other well. Um, I know that you travel a considerable distance to come make the meetings, and, um, it's just appreciated, and it's always noted, and being here and making yourself available for questions, for any concerns is appreciated, and I think just a reflection of how your firm operates and how you do business. So, thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Thank you. We feel likewise, so.
Absolutely. Okay. If there's no others, I, we had an approving on consent, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Same here.
Okay. Uh, item 11 then, Council, is a request to amend the engineering contract through the qualified-based selection, QBS, process with OHM Advisors for the design engineering services for 2020 asphalt road program. Mr. Zalinsik.
All right. Finally, the last item here on, uh, my list is the 2020 Asphalt Repair Program. It's considered contract 28. As you know, OHM has been involved since the infancy of this road program since 2002 with the millage being passed. I've been a great, uh, asset to the city, uh, day in, day out, with the road program, updating our maps, keeping us up to date on, uh, all the improvements and helping us out through, uh, any opportunities we get through federal aid, design, or, uh, construction, engineering. So, with that, we're looking for their, uh, uh, approval, based on $3.75 million worth of work to be done for the next year's asphalt program, to have them to provide design services for the city in the amount of $161,250. Again, Mark Locke is with OHM for 30 years here. He's been, again, instrumental, uh, since the 2002 program, and again, relying them heavily for doing an excellent job to get these roads done, repaired, and, in a timely fashion, so we can all enjoy them, uh, uh, you know, starting in May and getting done by, by, uh, September, sometimes, uh, running a little bit in October, but appreciate all their efforts and the contractors to do the work for the city.
Madam President.
Certainly. Go ahead.
I'll be happy to offer the approving resolution on this item for OHM Advisors. Um, they do a number of projects for us here in the city, and also have their home, or their national headquarters here in Livonia, so, uh, I'm happy to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda if there's no objection.
Great. Thank you. Approving on consent. Mark, anything you'd like to add, or?
Certainly. Good evening. I'd like to just reiterate what Scott said. Um, you know, we, we do this program. This is my 18th year of doing this program for the city, and we don't take it lightly. You know, every year when we do these streets, we do miles of streets in front of hundreds of people's homes, and while this program may be out of sight and out of mind for some people if you're, you're, if the work's not being done in front of your house, when it is done in front of your house, it is a big inconvenience, and we realize that. So, we, uh, we work hard, I think, to try to appease all, all the residents, and each person has an individual problem that we try to work out and make right for, for all the residents of the city. So, it is, uh, it, it is a challenge every year sometimes to, 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 to make this all work and, and make everyone happy, and, and we're just glad to be part of it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? No? Well, thank you. We're glad to have you. Go right ahead.
I just wanna say, and it's nice to have both of you here tonight, and also clear up the confusion that always exists between Scott, Scott Lockwood of AEW and Mark Locke of OHM.
Got it.
That you are not indeed the same person, or you're not Scott Locke and Mark Lockwood.
Right, exactly.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good one. Thank you. All right. You have an approving on consent. Um, if there's no from, one from the audience wishing to speak to this, we'll move on to item 12, which is, which is a request to approve First Amendment, uh, to Least Amendment between the city of Livonia and the American Tower Corporation, ATC, for cell tower at West Spring Meadows Golf Course. This is brought to us from the Department of Law. Mr. Burnier.
This actually came from, partially came from, uh, Finance. There is a renegotiation of the lease. We actually got a great deal on it, extending the lease. The incre, the price increased, and we also got a signing bonus as such of $275,000. There's additional, uh, fees that are kicked in if there are co-locators locate, on, on the tower, so we think it's a great deal that Mr. Slater negotiated.
Oh, nice. Nice. Council, your pleasure, your direction.
Madam President.
Go right ahead. Vice President Jolly.
I'll offer an approving for consent.
Approving on consent. Any others? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this item? If not, we'll move on to item 13, which is a proposed 2020 city council meeting schedule. This is brought to you by myself, um, in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act 17, uh, 1976 PA 267 as amended. This is our, uh, this is our meeting times and schedule, if you will, for our study meetings and our regular meetings starting January 2020 through December, uh, 14th of 2020. So, um, I would offer, no, go ahead. Somebody else offered, so I don't have to pass gavel and go through all that. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I will offer an approving resolution.
Thank you. Thank you.
On the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. You've heard, uh, Councilman Crispin offer approving on consent. Is there any others? Hearing and seeing no one? Yes, go right ahead.
Could we, could we just put that on the, on the regular?
Certainly, we could, if that's okay.
Is that right?
I.
Yeah. Doesn't bother me in the slightest.
Well, I, I would like to go through it and look at it relative to school holidays, because in past years, we've set things, and then after we, after we adopted the, the schedules, then we realized that there were conflicts with some school holidays when people might want to be gone, so.
Okay.
Along those lines, I, I did contact, um, Madam President.
Certainly.
In request that we not have a meeting the week that Livonia Public Schools had spring break and.
Sure.
The like of that, and she was very accommodating, so.
Sure. Okay.
I'd just like one more chance to.
Certainly. Certainly. Councilman Crispin doesn't have a problem with that, so we're good to go on that.
Thank you, Councilman Crispin.
Is there, uh, anyone from the audience wishing to speak to the agenda for next year? If not, um, that can, uh, we can go back to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council in any manner that wasn't on the yellow sheet? I see no one. Um, Council?
Please, I.
Yay.